Oh, okay. Goodness, thank you. Liz answered it off. Where am I?
Good evening, everyone. We'll start in two minutes. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the study session of the Campbell City Council on Wednesday, April 28th, this evening at 7:00 PM. I am calling to order this meeting. The study session is conducted via telecommunications and is compliant with the provisions of the Brown Act and Executive Order N29-20 issued by the Governor. This city council meeting is being livestreamed on Channel 26, the city's website, and YouTube. As with normal study sessions, when we begin the item, I will begin with asking any comments from the public, and then we will get into the presentations and discussions by council. Deputy City Clerk, may we have roll call, please? Councilmember Bybee.
Rafa.
Councilmember Landry.
Present.
Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Resnikov.
Here.
Mayor Gibbons. Here. Thank you. So I think we are discussing one item this evening, which is a continuation of April 20th, 2021 budget study session regarding the CIP and the work plans. The recommended action is to provide feedback on staff recommendations for the 2022 to 2026 capital improvement plan and the fiscal year 2022 work plans and council strategic priorities, so that such feedback can be incorporated into the draft fiscal year 2022 proposed operating budget and the 2022 to 2026 CIP, which will be posted on May 8th, May 11th, followed by a study session on May 18th. And with that, I was going to open it up to see if there were any comments from the public on this item this evening. Madam City Clerk, we had one item emailed to us late, but we've received that. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? There is not. Okay, thank you. And then we'll begin by an orientation from the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As you correctly stated, as a continuation from the budget study session from last week, the study session in its entirety was intending to touch base on the council priorities, the CIP, and lastly, the draft work plan from staff. Last Tuesday, we did touch a little bit on the priorities, but we did agree at the end of this discussion that we would circle back to that. So I think my proposal would be that we would do that this evening, if that's the pleasure of the council. But what I wanted to focus on tonight is the work plans that staff is proposing. I want to highlight the fact that these are, these are not set in stone. These are just draft, and the purpose of tonight is to begin a discussion. I want to be careful that we, we don't get too into the nitty gritty where we feel like we have to have the perfect wording or make sure we've covered every possible work plan that staff's going to employ. Tonight is a study session. It's an attempt to give some broad thoughts, make sure that the significant issues that need to be covered are covered in the spirit of the priorities and the spirit of the council, as far as what the council wants to accomplish for the years, is reflected here. There will be additional opportunities if there is something, it comes up over time. We hope to get a good shot at it tonight, but as the mayor said, we are going to have another budget study session on the operating budget on May 18th, followed by two more budget hearings in June. So there is additional opportunities. I certainly don't want to make the council feel like it's a, you know, a final work product tonight, but it is a good first start and it provides staff some direction before we really put the final touches and fine tune the draft budget that's going to be coming to the council. So with that, what we introduced last week was that the proposal is to have each of the department heads just spend a few minutes on their work plans and to highlight, not necessarily every single work plan that's in the packet. We understand the councils received these in advance and you've read them, but to highlight those that we believe has had council's attention, council's priority, council's comments about the work plan, so that we can at least highlight those for you. And then, of course, we can answer questions. There's probably a lot of nuances to all of these. I'm not sure the wording with all of them is exactly perfect, but the intent is to capture the spirit of what it is that we're trying to achieve. So with that, if that's acceptable to the council, Madam Mayor, I would start off with the city manager's department if you don't want to make any additional comments. I think you're muted, Madam Mayor.
I keep trying to be quiet. There are seven departments in broad terms. There's seven departments, and if we allow 10 minutes per department, knowing some will be a little longer and some will be a little shorter, that would give us time to have a wrap up. And in order to do that, I would like to encourage council members to listen to the presentation and then by each department discuss what they think is missing or a comment, but I'm going to ask us to refrain from commenting on each other's comments. Just let each of us have an opportunity to speak. Obviously, if there's something significant, we can work around that, but that's the idea of helping us get through the topics and having time at the end to go over the next steps and the priorities that we said we wanted to come back to. So with that, shall we begin with you, city manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to highlight just a few things, and there are several programs in my department. So like I said, I'm not going to read each of these, but I'm going to highlight with each program perhaps the more significant work plan items. And we're going to start with administration and Measure O, a very important project. I think council would all agree it's a high priority project. It's been a priority for two years. The city manager's office is providing overall coordination for Measure O and police and library design. Another significant program that we're working on that seems to be increasingly important is the coordinating and tracking of state legislation. 2019, the council adopted a legislative policy that we're now putting into place for the first time this year and hitting our strides. And I think a legislative committee has met at least twice now and discussed legislation. It is acting on that. So it's a very active work plan. And not only is it track, you know, general legislation, but it goes to the council priority of long-term land use planning. There is a significant amount of land use housing legislation that we're trying to stay in front of. Another one that I wanted to highlight with the city manager's administration is providing guidance and support on the general plan revision process. There is a parallel work plan item when we get to community development that touches base on the housing element, but I believe that the city manager's department is providing overall guidance and support for the general plan. And again, that speaks to the council priority of long-term land use planning. Moving on into the city clerks program, I did want to highlight a work item that we have to do this year that deals with the 2020 census and updates our election districts that we adopted last year. We'll be looking at bringing that into compliance, and you'll see, excuse me, when we bring the operating budget to you, that we're also budgeting for consultant services for that work. That work has to be completed by February of 2022. Another significant item of the city clerks is to pick up a work item that we tabled last year because of the pandemic and the reduction of staffing, and that's to work and implement automated public records request system. This is listed as an operational need, but it really is going to make us in the city clerk's department much more efficient in what we do. And the reason that's key is it's going to free up time to do other important things as well. And as you know, some of these public records requests just suck the time right out of the workday for the city clerk. So this automating this and coming up with a system that makes that streamline is important. Moving on into human resources, and this is related to, it says operational need, but I really think it's related to fiscal stability of the organization is developing a plan and filling key leadership positions in a strategic approach. As the council's aware, there is many vacancies that we've had over the last year. There is a plan to look at those strategically. I don't think the plan is going to fill every vacancy. I think that there's going to be some strategy to what is filled, what's realigned. Organizational structure may change in some cases, but yet we're not going to fill each and every position come July 1. As you know, our HR manager position is vacant. We would be looking likely to fill an HR position as one of our first, but then the other vacancies that would be proposed to be brought back this year will be brought back in a strategic phased approach. And we'll speak to that more when we bring back the operating budget and have a description of the positions and the strategy and talk through any of those organization structure issues that we would be proposing with the budget. And then also with HR is the finish up work, as the council's aware, we're in successor labor contract negotiations now with CPCEA, CMEA, carpenters. The CPOA is not open until January. So we have a work item that's really a carryover from this fiscal year. Some of that work will be completed this year, but certainly meet and confer with CPOA and any follow-up to the successor labor contracts, I think, is significant. In IT, we've been working, as you know, this year remotely and doing a lot of Zoom. We continue to find ways to make that product better. And as we look at opening up our meetings, we're looking at hybrid systems to continue to be able to offer social media Zoom for the public to participate in a product that we were looking at for last year that we never got to was the meeting video and recording systems and the systematic replacing of those as needed. They're very old equipment, and we do have dedicated funds for those through cable franchising fees that we receive. So that's not a general fund expense. That's an expense that comes out of restricted funds. So we would be looking at upgrading that recording systems and upgrading video systems, not wholesale across the board just to replace it, but looking at systematically what's going to improve the system in the product that we're offering to the public. Moving on, I have IT also working with the clerk's office on the public records request automation. And then moving on into Measure O, as I said earlier, Measure O is within the city manager's department. So there is several Measure O work plan items in here. They include overall planning and coordination for the design options and providing leadership and helping on the process to appoint a citizens oversight committee. That citizen oversight committee likely Um, that citizen oversight committee likely be appointed sometime um, uh, late this year, early 2022. Uh, and, and I can certainly uh, describe that process more in detail if, if the council wants. And lastly, with Measure O is, is working with the Finance Department and consultants to begin the preparations necessary for the second round of bonds issuance. I, I don't anticipate those bonds will be issued this fiscal year, but a, a, a lot of the work that goes into preparing for that will be done this fiscal year. Uh, and so that is the proposal uh, in my summary for the City Managers Office.
Thank you. And uh, do we have any comments from council members? Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you. Um, Brian, I appreciate the overview and um, in, in particular, a lot of the, the direction of the I T upgrades, which has the, the city moving in a very modern, modern direction, um, which I'm appreciative of. Um, I'm, I'm wondering if as part of that and um, with the um, in, incoming city clerk in, in that department. Um, if you've considered the use of uh, NetFile for um, at the 22 election and, and beyond, just makes it easier to uh, a, a lot of our neighboring cities has it, uh, makes it easier to, to file. And I think as we uh, do some of the, the district and uh, planning uh, for, for, for those plans, um, could, could be some synergy there. Um, so uh, ju- just something, you know, if uh, I'm not sure what the cost would be, but if it's cost effective, it might be a good investment.
Yeah, uh, i- if I could speak to that, uh, Councilmember Lopez, I, I didn't highlight that item, but it is in the City Clerk's work plan to implement an electronic filing system. Whether it's that, that one or another one, um, for, for all of the, the forms that you would be following, uh, uh, conflict interest form 700s. Uh, and, and possibly other campaign filing statement forms as well. So that is a work uh, uh, plan for the City Clerk's Office.
Great. I didn't realize that would uh, cover uh, the, a- any campaign forms. Uh, that's very exciting. Um. Uh, great. That, that's all the questions I have for now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lopez. Councilwoman Landry?
Oh, thank you. Uh, thank you, Brian, for the update on everything. Two questions. You talked about districting, but there's also some policies that we need to create about the church, how the mayorship turns over. Now that there's the five districts, does that count under redistricting?
Yeah, I, I know that comment was made. I, I didn't see that as a separate work plan item and we could certainly include it. I, I would certainly have that work under the redistricting process. If there's other policies that we have to come up, that would be part of that district discussion.
So maybe, sorry.
Uh, if it's a pleasure to the council, we could either uh, add language to that, that item uh, or a separate item, but the intention was that if there is uh, policy decisions that need to be made, they'd be made during that process.
So maybe added I, uh, just something about the council mayor transition. I don't know how you want to word it. And then the second one was, I know probably six months to a year before COVID. Uh, there was a discussion about potentially replacing the chairs in the council chamber. Is that in anybody's uh, wavelength yet? Not, not our chairs, not our chairs, the audience seats.
Yeah, you know, um, we, we don't show that in the C I P and that's something I, we could talk about. Um. Uh, we, we do have some improvements, but I, but we hadn't slated those chairs in there. That's something that I would have to look at again, Susan.
There was the chairs, the carpet and the drapes.
Yeah. I, I, we would have to look at that and see where we could program that. Next time, when, when we bring back the C I P, I can, I can have some response to that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Landry. Any others? Councilmember Bybee or Vice Mayor Resnickoff? No, uh, I have a few. Uh, the City Manager said that uh, if I understood correctly, he would be separating out as a new department, the City Clerk items. So that'll make that a little easier to follow. Another item that we talked about was communications, social media for the city versus the uh, 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 Police Department, because that hasn't worked out. We've talked about that for a while. Um, there's a couple of other comments I have is about the City Manager's um, organ- organization of his department. I think um, I liked the thought that you had early on that you reorganized your department, not necessarily replacing in kind with vacant positions. So um, I thought that was uh, of note. I also think it'd be good to have um, a work plan item about reopening. And that is going to be a long uh, term thing from July, probably through December. So that's going to take some time and effort in planning. And um, I think I, this may not belong here, but I think homelessness um, is something that the city is going to be asked to address um, in a more aggressive manner. And I don't know if it belongs in, in the City Manager's Office, but I would um, identify that um, as a petitional, petition, particular issue um, to be considering. And um, another off the chart kind of one is if uh, we need to consider doing ballot measures for revenue um, in 2020 November election or even in the May uh, primary election, uh, that might be something to keep an eye on.
Yeah, I, uh, with that, Madam Mayor, when we get to the finance, you'll see a work plan item uh, discussion on that for finance.
Okay, I missed that too. Okay, and I um, have to say, um, I'm not big on expenditures for, for furniture and things now. Um, okay, next item is Recreation Department.
Uh, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. So uh, for Recreation Community Services, our main focus for this next fiscal year will be financial stability. Um, for the council's requests throughout this whole budget process. And so as programs and services are brought back on, um, having the lens of uh, cost recovery for all direct operational costs will be the focus. Um, also focusing on the program areas that are currently um, large revenue generators that can cover a lot of their co- direct costs. Um, and building those programs out, um, finding ways to be more efficient within our um, our department as far as staffing and business process and customer service delivery um, of the services and programs that we provide, um, and looking at ways to develop that. Also working um, if for a long-term strategy for in a structure of employees that is meaningful and um, you know, shows professional growth within our organization uh, in our department and also, you know, allows for um, breadth of programs and services to still be offered. So that will be the main focus. Uh, the other work plan item that is listed there, uh, we were kind of a supplemental department to assist with that because we oversee a large portion of the facilities, but um, the Finance Department would have been the lead and I think this might be on pause. So we are kind of on standby if this is a um, and a work plan item that uh, Finance can take on during this next fiscal year. Uh, we did have a C I P project during this last fiscal year that will also be a priority for us uh, to do, uh, which was the hazardous materials of um, city facilities. So doing kind of that au- audit assessment. So we have a baseline to, to manage moving forward. And that concludes what I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Natasha. Um, ca- questions from council members? Councilmember Bybee?
Hi Natasha, just a quick question. Um, on the last item, you talked about the hazardous materials um, audit. I, I don't see that in the proposed work plan on the list.
Yeah, I realized it's not there, so I need to have um, them added in. So it was a C I P project, but without um, a building maintenance supervisor, it wasn't something. And then with COVID and everything else, i- it's just been paused, but it is um, something that we'd like to be ahead of so that if um, someone from the community brings something to our attention, that there's a plan in place for us to kind of mitigate those instances. Um, the last real substantial report that was done, I think was done in late nineties, early two thousands. And so I, I think most of it's been mitigated, but it's just, I think, a good thing for us, um, because it is such an old facility.
Thank you. Any other questions from council members? Uh, Councilmember Lopez?
Um, yeah, just um, I, I mean, a, a question and a comment. I'd, I'd hope that you consider um, you know, I, I think probably raising fees is, is going to be a, a big part of the, the first one. And, and I think there, there's agreement for uh, the, the, the need for making that more sustainable. Um, I, I would encourage you to, to think about um, ways beyond just raising fees. I'll, you know, understand that's probably going to be a part of it. Um, to, to reduce some of those costs, such as making use of volunteers or other, you know, I, I know that's a, a lot of what the department has relied on um, in, in the past. So if there are ways to do that, um, to, to keep those services successful, I think that'd be a positive for the community.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Landry?
Um, I thought I read somewhere in here and maybe it was under Public Works about not doing that they didn't feel the hazardous material study was necessary. Did I read that correctly? I was just trying to find it right now. I think.
I don't think that it wasn't necessary. It was that we didn't have staffing capacity to manage it during this last fiscal year. So it was in the C I P and it's still there and it's been funded. Um, so I think in the C I P, we had a certain portion for the first year and uh, the follow-up uh, for year two in C I P. And that's just all been kind of pushed out. So we've kind of reset year one as this next fiscal year.
Okay, I'll try to find what I thought I read. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilwoman. And um, I just have a couple of comments. Um, I, I would encourage you to build out your work plan a little bit more. Um, you have a lot of uh, departments. You have your senior programs and um, your uh, swim programs and other programs. I think it would help because if you look at the list we received, you were miniscule. Yet you have a substantive budget. So I think it would be helpful um, to have a document that explains a little bit more about your responsibilities of the department. Um, I, of course, uh, am interested in um, the senior programs and making sure we aren't going to cut back on the senior programs or the senior food programs. There may be adjustments. Uh, we know that COVID is ma- causing us to make adjustments, but I think that will help us highlight what adjustments um, that staff is recommending in your various programs.
So uh, uh, in the budget document, there is the first page that does have ongoing responsibilities. So that is just an ongoing and work plans have generally always been above and beyond everything that we're doing. So there isn't anything that is slated to be cut at this time. It's more of that services may be paused because of COVID and they will be coming back online as things reopen and it's safe to do so. Um, our senior, our 50-plus division has a point eight F T E associated with it right now. So the ability to build out a work plan is just not reasonable at this time for it's the limited staffing that we have in that specific division. So that's why it's, it's very focused on what we can do holistically as an entire department, moving forward and being strategic about, you know, as we reopen, this is, this is how we're moving forward um, for these segments of our department and these other segments that are never going to be cost recovery are going to be the ones that we bring back online, but we do it in a very thoughtful manner, like Councilmember Lopez says, we build in more volunteers or we're doing other things to kind of supplement that, to bring those things back.
That's actually a very helpful discussion. Thank you for that. Um, there's some inconsistency among the departments with the level of detail that's provided. Not all departments have done what you've done, which is to focus on uh, the work over and above the normal responsibilities. So um, I just offer that simplifying all of them to that level would be enormously beneficial, I think, um, to the council and to yourselves for the level of work needed. So appreciate that comment. Okay, if there's nothing else for that, we will go on to the Finance Department.
All right. Okay. Um, so the uh, the wa- the wa- hard plan in, in our um, uh, apartment, um, the um, the two, um, the two key things that we attempted to, uh, attempted to address, um, were, were both us, we're both us. I, I, as goal, ability, um, and also fiscal recovery. Um, of coming, uh, coming from COVID, um, I think that uh, those were a two key uh, uh, two key, uh, uh, topics to address. Um, I think also that the uh, that the council uh, does agree um, that um, uh, coming from uh, COVID, um, they are two key uh, times to address. Um, so I'm keeping those two uh, uh, topics up top. Um, I, um, I would, uh, I would want to discuss with our council on the details of our hazard accounts. Um, I would pro- pro- I would propose um, that we meet with a council on in a, in a, a fall um, to uh, go through the different uh, 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 the different hazard accounts. Um, confirm that um, they uh, meet the intended uh, purpose. Uh, whether they should be, um, whether they should be uh, uh, adjusted. Or, or I mean, also, um, do we need, um, either any, uh, need, any, uh, need, any uh, additional counts or also, um, can a different um, accounts be put on chip? Can different accounts be put uh, 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 together as well? Um, so, so I pro- pro- I, I would pro- oppose um, that we meet with a council in a, the, in the, uh, uh, the, in the, in, uh, the, in the, in the a fall, um, to uh, go through her back. Um, I would also, um, um, what we were uh, talking about on, in, um, a, a, um, to discuss with, um, a council, um, a potential, potential, potential new, uh, potential new, uh, uh, income streams, um, either a new, um, a, a taxes, um, they, they could be a new, a new, a new, um, a ch- a ch- a charges, um. And I would, I would also, uh, pro- oppose, um, that we talk to a council in a, a fall. Um, but, um, it, um, it, it could, it, it could, it could, it could also be, uh, it could also be, uh, before, uh, out you, um, de- dependent uh, upon a whether or not we would want to put a, a new, a new, um, tax on out a, a, a vote, um, in the half ball. Um, so we can, um, uh, let's discuss the, uh, 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 I know that, um, but I, I do, um, agree, um, it's a, a, a council, a, a discussion um, that I, that, um, that I, that I would, um, I would want to, uh, if, um, a, a council, a, a couple of a different potential, uh, 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 choices, um. And, and also a pro- objections, um, about what we, what we could earn um, from, from each of those. Um, and then, um, in a, a tension, um, to, to really a look, to really look at the way um, that we, uh, pro- pro- that we pro- uh, uh, project um, out our income and expenses, um, to, it's, 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 it's terrible, um, that, uh, when, when we get to the end of, um, uh, the year. Um, that what, what, whatever we put into our projected amounts, um, uh, comes on a comes, uh, comes a close, um, to the, the actuals, um, that we get, um, come the Are close to the, the actuals that we get come the. Come each June. So it, 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 it could be on that we, that we, that we get. That we either get a new or a different. Or, um, that, um. We, we get them. As well, but it's, it's really to. Improve that and to ensure that we come. I come a lot, a lot. A lot. A house or. And, and then we, we, we also. We also, we also propose. That, that we, we be, be, begin the steps. To sell on the next. Oh, a tech them. I and anticipate that it will be in either, well, it will be us. Around July of. But it, it does take about two, three months of. Two to three months of time and work upfront. So I would and, and anticipate that we would begin in about April. In FY. And, and then in attention to, to a work with the, of work with the police. And the public works to. I, I, I try to buy what we need for the. A new PD building FFE. To, to, um, inch, 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 ensure that we get down the. Okay, but, but also on how we intend to pay for that. So, um, we would again work with the police. And the public. Apartments and stuff there. And then, um, for, for the, for the way that we help the. A public, the council, our internal. Apartments to, to, to also continue to improve. What we, what we, what we do in payroll. But, but, but also to, to, to see how we can. Improve of both AP. And also on our, our business of law. There are. Two things that I didn't get a chance to. To heavily address them over, over my first. Two years. But I, I think it's a, a, it's a good time to. And it will, it will, it will also. It will also, it will also help us to serve the. A public. So that they, so that they, so that they don't need to come in. A person to do or to pay. Ever, 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 I think that they need to. So the, I will now return it. And I take, I take. I need a question.
Thank you, Will. Are there any questions, counsel? Councilmember Lopez?
I, thank you, Will. Again, you know, this is another place where I really see our investment in tech. Really going in that direction and our ability to serve the public increasing. I'm, I'm wondering, just because I know there's been some council discussion of this when it's come up before. In, in the item under accounting, under the, the business license systems and improving data. I know I, I certainly have an interest and I think it's come up before with other council members in. Finding out better data on how businesses are persevering through COVID or, you know, which ones we've lost. Would that be included in this item? And is that part of your thinking or? Would, would that be something either shared or housed in another department?
I mean, it, it, it would be, um, it would be. It would be addressed a bit. I, 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 I think the thing that we, the thing that we, the thing that we also would do. Uh, has some to, is to a partner. Have our econ. Our econ. Apartment. And, um, held up our. Build up our. So that we did know. When a, once the hangs either, when things either opened or are closed. But we also. We've got a really, a really, a really old. A really old. A database. A program. So I would, I would, I would. You know, whether or not it's, whether or not it. It's, 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 it's still okay. Other or not, it, it, it's, it's still, it's, it's still will meet. What we, what we. And, um, and so if it. Then, then, then also. Explore whether or not it should, it should be. Well, whether or not it should be. A change down.
Great. And I'll just say I'm glad that that's part of your thinking. I just don't want to lose sight of that as something I think is important to figure out. Thank you.
Councilmember Bybee?
You've made it muted, Anne. Thanks. Thank you, Will, for the presentation. I appreciate that. Look at the work plan as, for me, that the priority should be the. What are the council priorities, measure all implementation? The fiscal stability and recovery. While I recognize that the other items are operational needs. I'm. Would be more inclined to either put those, defer those a year or maybe pick one. And, and work on that in this fiscal year. I, I just don't know that. I'd rather see quality rather than quantity on those types of issues and. To me, taking on all three of those in a pandemic year where we're recovering and we have staff that isn't back to work yet and a number of issues, I would rather see. Less emphasis on, on those three operational needs and maybe pick one that's would be more of a priority.
That's, thank you, Councilmember Bybee. Will, I think we're going to let you just acknowledge what was said. Okay. And other questions? Same with my comments, Will. I'm just going to give you my thoughts. I agree with Councilmember Lopez's comments and Councilmember Bybee's comments. I would like to stress that I do think we need to have a really strong grasp, grasp. Of the contact list with all businesses and what businesses have we lost during COVID. So I think that really belongs as a separate list, a separate task as opposed to just updating the business licensing system. And then the other item is doing the monthly and or quarterly updates to council. The city manager and you can talk about what's going to work for the council, but we need to improve on what we did this year and that's a very important item for us. Anything else? All right. With that, we will move on to Community Development Department. And Brian, are you going to take the lead on that one?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'll try to rebrief on this one. There's a lot of items here, so if I don't highlight one, it's not because it's not important, but. There's a lot of items that relate to council priorities here. And I'm going to try to focus on those. We have a work plan item to work with the city attorney's office, update the city's density bonus and inclusionary ordinance. We've heard comments about in-lu fees. I would see that being part of that discussion as well as it relates to housing. Another work item to work with the city attorney's office to amend the camping ordinance. And follow up on the work that we did last year with. With camping, there are some issues with regard to the allowance of public assembly on public assembly use zone sites and that work needs to be completed. And then I have two items in here that are related to general plan update and an item related to working on the housing element revision. Those are obviously key things for the council. And then finishing, working with the consultant on objective standards for residential development. As you know, that's a. A follow up for, from state legislation. And an important item that we're in the midst of there. And then as we turn to the next one. I, I looked at the suggestion, the work plans of that overlap from the commissions with Community Development Department, in particular. The Planning Commission and the Historic Preservation Board. And I'll speak to that in a moment, but, but this next item. To work and develop ADU ordinance to allow short-term rentals and consideration of a possible amnesty program. For existing illegal ADUs. I, I think is something that the Planning Commission supported and something that, that I think is within. The work plan for that department certainly doable this year. It's not a commitment to the direction that we're going to take with regard to ADUs and short-term rentals, but. It's been brought up for a couple of years and I think the time is ripe. To do that, so that that is a proposal for Community Development Department. And then there's a catchall provision in here to work with the city attorney's office to revise zoning ordinances to comply with state law. There's numerous ordinances that will need to be implemented because of state law changes and there will probably be more that we don't even know about yet as, as state law. Legislation goes through that process this year. And moving on to economic development, touching base on, on the council and Will's comments with economic development. There, the Economic Subcommittee Committee has met and had made some suggestions as far as the structure of economic development and where that would be appropriate. I didn't take the liberty to move that. It's still shown under economic development. But, but that, that discussion will be a discussion we have when we bring the budget. And the budget structure to the council and I'd be looking for council direction on that recommendation from, from the. Economic Development Subcommittee and the appropriate place for that, for that program. But with related to economic development, I had just one significant work plan item and it's, it's, it really covers. Hopefully, everything that we should be focusing on this year and it's developing strategy. To leverage city efforts and maximize business recovery from the impacts of COVID. And maybe that's not the, the best word in of it, but the idea is we need to, we, we need to just not be whack a mole here. We need to come up with a strategy of what it is that we want to achieve and develop a plan. And work towards that plan. And I think that's a significant item. And then there's been several mentions about housing. In the next month, you'll be looking at a house keys contract. That will be coming to you in, in the coming weeks to the council for consideration. But parallel to that, I, I think next year, it's my suggestion that we, we more fully evaluate our options for administering that program. I think some of those issues will come up and that's not committing us to do one thing or the other, but. Certainly as a placeholder, I, I think it's important for us to be considering our options with housing. And I'm certainly able to answer questions from community development if there is any.
With that, are there any questions from council? Councilmember Woman Landry?
Thank you. I would just make, actually make the comment of how important the economic development work is going to be. I know as a subcommittee, we met and had a lot of ideas, so I look forward to having a continued discussion.
Excuse me. Thank you. Any other council members? Councilmember Lopez?
Yeah, a number of things. Thank you, Brian. So I'll, I'll try to go over these fairly quickly. With the ADUs, I, I think that's a very, you know, positive set, a, a, examine and maybe have, you know, identify. Standards for what amnesty could look like. I would also, in terms of the public facing portion, would really look to what San Jose did with their ADU portal as a very positive model and. See if there's any opportunity there to potentially use some of those resources. I'm sure that's something that, that. You'd consider we'll be looking at, but I, I, I think could be a, a, a good example of. What that could look like to make that really accessible to the public. With the zoning ordinance updates, I know that, that's kind of a catchall. I, I just want to stress, I really see this as a major priority in, in terms, you know, and, and not, not that I have any necessarily reason. Today to worry, but there, there really is substantial liability. In many cases, other cities are finding out the, the, the hard way. And, and we, you know, if we don't meet some of those standards could. Lose some of the control we have over those projects. So really see that as, you know, it's, it's not an option. We, we've just got to do it. Even though it's, it's a lot of work as we all know. With economic development, just to follow up on my discussion under the, the finance department item, you know, I, I, I'd like to see some. Collaboration there to, to make sure departments are on the, the same page. And, and I really see this work of identifying, you know, these businesses and getting that information. As a key part of economic recovery. So I, you know, see, see that as a priority. And I'm, I'm, you know, glad to hear. I hope you'll consider a wide. Range of options to really make sure we're, we're making the best use of our dollars for the housing program. My, my question there is just about the timeframe, given that we'll have the house keys. Discussion and I know you touched on this. It sounds like then there's going to be a, a separate. Process for, for a broader evaluation. Can you just clarify that a little bit, how that would work?
I, I'm looking more at the models versus the satisfaction with the contractor. I think the discussion coming to the council is specific contracts with house keys, but. It's been a while since we've done a more comprehensive analysis of. You know, other contractors out there, other models, whether it's in-house, whether. You know, it's, it's with a contract or it's a hybrid system. We've kind of got away from the in-house and that may be the best model. I'm not suggesting that we hire staff to do this work, but. Want to try to find an efficient way to really hit the mark. And, and then. Is an important piece to that is probably a discussion with the council and the item above. On the certification compliance and necessary enforcement. We need to find a way to make this. We need to find a way to make this program sustainable. As we see, we are getting revenues from the pot of money and the interest that we have, but we're burning through it quicker than we're earning interest and revenue, so we need to find a way to make those program revenues more sustainable over time. And I think that leads to the administration and, you know, the cost of the administration and the fees that are charged. So I'm looking at more of a holistic approach than just, are we satisfied with the contractor? Do we like them, or do we want to go with someone else? This is a more holistic sort of analysis.
And that holistic discussion would be more just later on in the fiscal year, at a date yet to be determined.
Correct, yeah, correct.
Thank you.
Although their contract is due for renewal.
Yeah, I think it's fair to say, you know, without presupposing the council to a decision on the contract, that discussion could accelerate that process or change that process. So this was there just because I think we need to do it regardless. The level of work and the detail of that work will probably be more defined after we've evaluated the existing administrator and gotten feedback from the council on that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Brian, I think that maximizing business recovery is critical, and I think anything we do in economic development has to be geared toward that. They have to be meshed and using city resources and also reaching out, whether it's Chamber or other business organizations, they should be involved. I do like the idea of addressing the issues with existing ADUs. As far as the BMRs, when we have that discussion, I think from what I've seen with new housing, especially for sale, we've, the administration of that's been good. I know directly people have told me they've been able to go through the workshops and get housing and all that, and it worked much more smoothly when we have them. What I'm gonna be interested in hearing then is the compliance, because that was the other driver for the whole thing of how are we in compliance today versus when we started? In particular, with the rentals, because that's obviously the hardest. And then, of course, the updates, we've had a couple for-sale units that presented challenges too. And one of the advantage of the house keys was their, seemingly their technical ability, but also their willingness to address tough issues there. So that's, I'd like to see the compliance part. And lastly, the more you can do online in this department, the better. I think people in the last year now have different expectations of what they can do remotely. Things that we couldn't do remotely, we do as a standard now. So instead of backing up to where we were, let's become more efficient than. There may be people that never want to come back and do things in person, so we should be looking at all the processes and seeing how to use technology to make remote even easier and more efficient, and it probably saves us costs too.
Yeah, and to that point, and I don't mean to comment on each of your comments, but we do have a work plan item to continue to refine online applications and permit tracking, so I think that goes to your point, it probably goes beyond just online permitting.
A couple, real fast, I mean, we now have people that call into meetings, and there's no reason for that to stop, and we never thought, you know, we talked about that. As if, wouldn't it be nice if, well, it's happening now, right? And as far as other things, I can tell you, I use services now that are strictly by app, order by app that I never used before, and it's natural, and you want to just continue it. So we should take advantage, I think, of a mindset change, and it opens up the services to people that don't want to come in or just can't come in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I would offer, I agree with the previous comments. The housing element, I think you've listed Plan 2050. That's really kind of gone by the wayside by next year, and it has to do with the RENA numbers and the planning collaborative, that all falls under the housing element, so I wouldn't include that. I do think you need to separate out the ADU ordinance amnesty and the, I always get, short-term rentals, they're two quite separate. There's short-term rentals that aren't just for ADUs, there's short-term rentals in all types of housing units. So I think those are two separate things. I also thought that our discussion earlier about what ADU amnesty really means will be important for the council to understand when you come back with the plan. It doesn't mean amnesty with the building code, so that's an important thing to understand. And then, zones for short-term rentals. Yeah, the PC, you mentioned, the Planning Commission talked about impact fees and parking standards and some other things. I think a lot of what the Planning Commission was recommending on their work plan will actually fall under the housing element. I think that will all get encompassed into that rather than being separate work items for the Community Development Department. So you might want to take a look at that. Talked about the economic development, again homelessness, I'm stuck in here just so we didn't forget it. And some of the city attorney may have more action items going through some of these items. When you finish with your draft operation plan, there might be a few more city attorney coordination items. And I do agree with Councilmember Lopez about making sure that all our zoning ordinances are updated. Okay. Next item, we're not too bad tracking.
Sorry, Mayor, could I make a quick comment? Thank you, just because you reminded me by mentioning the short-term rentals. Brian, one of the bills that we're examining that we've commented on in the Legislative Subcommittee could impact that and open up new sources of revenue. So I would just, you know, I know we're gonna continue monitor that on the Subcommittee, and that could be its own, you know, whether deciding to opt-in, and that could be another potential work plan item. It's a little bit up in the air because we don't know if it'll pass, but if it does come up.
So you hit the nail on the head. I do think whether that passes or not, the city still has the option, which the majority of other cities do, is to independently come to an agreement with short-term rental companies to gain revenue. So I agree with you that that's an important work item. Thank you. Okay, so next we have legal, if my order is correct. You're up.
Mayor Gibson, members of the council. The major theme with my major work plan items is to work with other departments basically to accomplish the city council's priorities, particularly with regard to the general plan and housing element, objective standards for residential development, documents to implement Measure O, revisions to the density bonus ordinance and inclusionary ordinance. And actually, the last item on there, I know Brian put that on there. As far as my office's obligations, we have largely completed my office's involvement in the update of the Public Works contracts and specifications. I recognize that the Public Works Department, as I understand, does have a significant amount of work still to do with regard to some of the technical specifications for construction, and my office will certainly work with them to the extent they feel it's necessary on those items. But that really is not an item that will be a major work plan item for my office in the next fiscal year, as it is, as I said, substantially completed.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Anyone have questions for the city attorney? I would just offer that I do think it's important to have, and it may not need a work item specifically, but to follow up on developing and implementing a communication and priority process, how the city attorney works with the various departments and staff. And then, one of your notes, I didn't see the housing element specifically mentioned, but you spoke to it just now, and one of yours had to do with objective standards for ADUs in new residential. Thought that was a little weird wording, if you.
Yes, actually, I don't know where that came from. It wasn't in what I presented for this list, so I don't know. I think it was on maybe Brian's mind to try and add ADUs there somewhere.
If you just coordinate and clarify those, that would be great.
Yeah, if I could speak to that, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, and the city attorney is correct. I added that as kind of a catch-all. There are several items in Community Development. It's dealing with the inclusionary housing density bonus and revising ordinances to comply with state law, including ADUs. Probably not state law regarding only ADUs, but state law period, including ADUs. That's probably misworded, but that statement was intended to include all of those.
It might be helpful to delineate them a little more.
We will.
That would be helpful. Okay, any other questions? I will move on to public safety. Okay. Chief Berg, you're up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you see, our work plan list is fairly compact. Historically, the police department is primarily focused on day-to-day operational needs of public safety in our community. But as you can see on our list, both work plan items deal with Measure O, one being the design process that we're heavily involved in right now, and then working with other departments to identify the FFNE's funding sources, what can be, what items can be brought from the existing building to the new building, and how we can do that with the most cost-effective way. That completes my presentation.
No fear, you need to talk. Okay, any questions? Yes, Councilmember Lopez.
Yeah, thank you. Chief Berg certainly appreciate the compactness. I'm wondering, given some of the proposals there and the CIP and some of the discussion we've had, if there's opportunity or a need for something on long-range planning with regard to updating systems. There's a few different proposals under that, and that seems like something that might be more long-term or strategic, as that could open up other discussions. So I just wonder if that's something you'd consider or see it need for.
No, no, it's a very good point, and that was a discussion topic internally because we didn't want to prematurely create a work plan item for something that hadn't been approved in the CIP process, presupposing that it was going to be approved. But I can tell you that should any of the items in the CIP be approved, obviously, the capacity is there to implement them appropriately.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that question and clarification. I have a couple of comments, and I wrote my notes before Natasha made her comments, so I'll just mention them, and then you can see if they fit as a separate item or part of your normal work. I just thought community outreach is an important part of the Campbell PD work. Coordination with Santa Clara County Fire Department, given our relationship and staffing with them, I thought was important. Traffic, safety. And then, again, unhoused and coordination with the county, because it's taking a lot of your time and effort. And the other one I put in was CERT. And the reason I put this in, just so to be clear, is the last two years, it's been cut out of the budget, and council wasn't really aware of that. And CERT, at least my input is that CERT's been extremely beneficial to the community, providing services and all kinds of events, and stepping up to the plate whenever we needed help with food deliveries and senior food and whatever. It's a very positive organization, and having seed money makes it easier for them to get matching grants. So I hope that the CERT would be included, however it should be listed in your budget program. Those are my comments.
Yeah, I can respond real quickly. I agree with you, CERT is an essential function within the city. I think the line item for CERT doesn't represent our partnership and support of the program. It continues, and if items are needed for the program, obviously, the police department supports the program. It's not as if the CERT program went away because the funding for equipment on any given year goes away. So I don't know that the dollar amount in the budget is representative of the importance of CERT, because we continue supporting them. And I fully agree with the other items you mentioned. Those have been our priorities, continue to be our priorities, and I look at those as being part of our daily operational efforts.
Thank you. No other comments? All right, we will move on to the last and most famous, Public Works. Todd?
I have been called many things lately, but that has not been one of them. So good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Before we get started, you know, I just want to just give you some context that, you know, I'm trying to cover the work plan items for 11 different work units. And I will say upfront that there is a lot of coordination in between our work groups and which happens on a daily basis. And so sometimes there are items that might fall under one area's work plan because they predominantly carry the work, but they are supported by other work units. And then, of course, we have the same discussion that you've been subject to this evening as to what really constitutes a work plan item as opposed to your ongoing operations. And so we sometimes struggle with that and need to go back and forth and talk about what really are the things that we do on a daily basis as opposed to recognizing the work that is kind of above and beyond. So that being said, I will say that generally speaking, our work plan items are based on a combination of factors that include, of course, what the council priorities are, meeting our legal requirements and obligation, meeting our operational needs, and of course, being fiscally, of course, being fiscally responsible in how we provide these services. So in putting things together, as I mentioned before, I'm not going to read all these to you. I'm not even gonna come close to that, I'm gonna take questions on this at some point. But what we try to do when we talk about work plan items is we try to identify the efforts that are significant. And in Public Works, that is largely tied to the CIP, because a lot of our work plan items are projects that the city funds separately through the CIP document. And things that are of kind of a higher importance in this year and have been in previous years, of course, are the continuing Measure O efforts as we continue to move our design process along for both library and the police building. The annual street maintenance is important because of the magnitude. You could also argue that that's kind of an ongoing responsibility because we do an annual street maintenance project every year. But when you're investing upwards of $2 to $2.5 million on an annual basis, it really constitutes being a work plan because it, I mean, a work plan item, because it is a unique project each year. It's not simply going out and redoing the same streets. We're doing seal coating one year, we're doing overlay one year, we're in local streets one year, we're on the arterials another year. And so that really does require a large amount of custom work, so to speak. And of course, keeping in line with our council priorities, we also have our handful of parks and open space projects, most notably the John D. Morgan Park Project, which is under construction now. That will be wrapping up in the early part of the new fiscal year. But right behind that will be the Campbell Park Projects, which hopefully will go under construction not too far after that. The only other issue that I will comment on specifically was what you heard from the city attorney about the contract and spec work. He is correct that we are wrapping up our efforts in our coordination work with the attorney's office on what we call the front-end specs. So our front-end contractual documents and specs are, that work is largely complete. What a little bit remains will certainly be done this fiscal year. But the work that will continue into next year are certainly gonna be the technical specs and what you might call the construction details. So there is a fair amount of work, and we need to bring our work crews together as we go through the details related to street lighting or to irrigation or to building control systems. So we're really trying to get, you know, all of our specs updated, and that will be a continuing effort as we move into the new fiscal year. So as promised, I'm not gonna read any more of these that I've already referred to, but happy to take your input and answer questions on any as we move along. Thank you.
Todd, I was counting on you taking at least 15 minutes.
Sorry to disappoint.
And questions, Councilmember Bybee?
Hi, Todd. Thank you for the brief presentation. I appreciate it. I just had a couple of questions. Just wanted to clarify. In the environmental programs, you have a bullet point, provide support to the West Valley Solid Waste and West Valley Clean Water JPAs. Does that include work on SB 1383 implementation on that presentation that we had recently, where we're going to be needing to be doing outreach?
Yes, it actually does, and that's kind of, I mean, again, that's kind of our, that's almost an operational work plan item to say that we have support, because I really think the support goes both ways on that. So as you know, the JPA that we're a part of includes Campbell, Los Gatos, Manas, Sarino, Saratoga. And we are collectively faced across the street with some changing requirements for how we process our organics. And so there's going to be efforts that go back and forth between us supporting their efforts and they supporting the efforts of the individual cities. I will say that the work associated with SB 1383 is going to be a little bit above and beyond what we would normally do. Although the JPA certainly will take the lead in negotiating the hauling contract and the processing contracts, the city side will certainly be more instrumental in helping educate our residents. And we are going to have to make at least one ordinance change with regard to our MUNI code. And we will also have to revisit our procurement or purchasing policy to talk about the level of recycled content and things that we will purchase from here on out. So that's really going to be the increase in workload on the city side. So if you think that that bears maybe, you know, a call-out on the work plan, that's something that we could certainly consider, but that's going to be the level of increased work with regard to that.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to be sure that it was being accounted for in some fashion. Again, I'm looking at council priorities in, you know, again, as I said in the finance, when we went through finance, that I'm looking more for quality rather than quantity. I mean, you know, loading all these things on, if you really realistically cannot do them, or you don't have the staffing to do it, I think we need to be realistic and accept that. And so that's just my point of view. And then the second question I have has to do building maintenance, and it's the CIP projects. Natasha already talked a little bit about the hazardous material audit at the community center, and then the building C, breezeway, ceiling, whatever that project is.
Yes.
Is that included in that you've got a full, complete, all funded special projects for city buildings?
Yes, that's what, we kind of write that as a more generic work plan item, because that project is really not of the same magnitude as some of the other ones that I mentioned. And so it will be, I mean, it will be a significant project for us to do, but it doesn't rise to the same, you know, type of call-out as Measure O or annual street maintenance. And we may do, you know, three or four of those over the course of the year. And sometimes the priorities change, like you've heard from other departments, because of the world around us changing, and so we've had to postpone or reprioritize. So we do know that we have some capacity on the building maintenance team to manage what you might call the small to intermediate capital projects. That capacity does only go so far, but as we're looking at fiscal year '22, we do have that breezeway project on our plan to make sure that gets implemented.
Okay, thank you, Todd.
Thank you. Any other questions? Also, woman Landry?
Yeah. Ann asked, my first two questions were about the SB 1383, and I kind of figured it would be in the JPA line item. Our last time when we met, we had a good discussion around traffic calming. And right now, there still only shows the 12,000 carryover. And I was hoping that that becomes more of a work item and that we do put more money into citywide traffic calming. And let's see, I guess that was it.
Yes.
My last comment was, my last comment is what Ann said about you have a lot of work to do and looking at priorities, if certain things are going to drop out, what are the priorities and what needs to be getting done? Because I hear quite a lot that you say how busy you are, and so I just, we don't want to overwork you to the extent that if quantity or quality over quantity, I think Ann keeps saying, so I would agree with that.
Yes. Appreciate that comment, so thank you for that. I will say about traffic calming, what you have in the packet today with regard to the CIP is unchanged since the last meeting. This is essentially the same packet with the same information. So we are factoring your comments from our meeting eight days ago, and we are going to rearrange some projects and some dollars. And I think you'll be happy to see a little bit of an increase in traffic calming for fiscal year '22, '23. We did carry that as a work plan item under transportation engineering, so you'll see it in there. And so, and I will make a comment, because I think that you've heard, you know, maybe differing approaches from each of us tonight. So I know that we've got some vacant positions, you know, all of us do. And so I'm working under the assumption that, you know, perhaps incorrectly, but perhaps correctly, you know, we shall see that all of the resources that we're proposing to fill will be filled. And so this is a fairly robust and optimistic work plan. And I think as we get into the operating budget proposals, particularly with regard to positions that might manage and implement capital projects, that's where we'll probably have to give you just a little more detail on how the capacity would be affected by positions that are filled or either not filled, or in some cases, how we would have the option to maybe have some projects managed, you know, through a third party. But you're right, there is definitely going to be a capacity issue for what the in-house staff is able to manage and implement. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, that went to my comment of what are the priorities? And if, for whatever reason, there is no staff increase or minor staff increase, what projects fall out? Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Councilmember Bybee, your hand's still up. Do you have anything else? You're okay? Thanks. So I would like to follow up on that. And I would encourage you, Todd, to simplify your task list, the work lists, a little bit to really clarify for council what's the normal operational responsibilities, and then highlight your work, because that will make it easier, frankly, for me, and I guess others, to understand what your staffing load and thoughts are. I will say, I have had conversations with the city manager very much on your last point, which is, what are we budgeting for? What is the work plan implied budgeting? Is it full staffing, and is it full funding and all of that? So that is going to be an important part of the draft operational budget. And the council will be coming back with, on the 18th. We'll get it on the 11th, and we'll talk about it at a study session on the 18th. A full draft, a working draft, not a final document, a working draft of an operational plan where we will have an understanding of staffing and budget and the resulting work plans and CIP. So this is why we're here tonight, is to talk through these kinds of various things, and people have been very helpful. So I would offer, you put down the Bascom Ave Complete Streets project. Council has never seen that. And I think it's a much bigger deal, because council's never seen it. And there's some things in there that, because of the presentations I've been to, that I have questions about, and I'm going to guess others will. So that's one of those ones that I think should be called out for your information. The VMT implementation, to me, is pretty straightforward. I just wanted to comment that you don't want to lose track of LOS. It's going to be also involved in projects. But I sort of consider those both operational at this point, because they are what they are. I would like to see a vehicle and equipment policy update. You know me, every time you come up with a purchasing agreement, I always make a comment about it. So I won't say it's a priority, it just came on my list when I was going through what you had written out. The other one is, you have listed trees, there's an awful lot of tree damage in our parks. So I just would ask, make sure that there's enough in your work plan and funding to address the damaged trees from the climate and the drought, particularly at J.D. Morgan Park, which is the one I walk mostly, awful lot of damage. I did put a note in there, what are there outsourcing opportunities available? And you've mentioned a couple of things that weren't on the city attorney's list that you'll need to double-cross-check with him to see what needs to be done on that. And isn't the environmental JPAs and our staff, don't they pay for half of his time or something?
Yeah, it's a combination of funding that comes from the two JPAs. So you're correct, it is both from the solid waste JPA and from the clean water JPA. The, I can tell you that there are definitely some funding challenges there on the clean water side, because that is the fixed amount, and we're a little more robust on the, shouldn't say robust, I should say that we have less of a funding limitation on the solid waste side, because that really is part of the whole funding source there. So, but those are the two funding sources that feed into our environmental fund, and then the position is funded directly out of the environmental fund. So yes.
And city funds. It's a combination of city funds and environment.
We're trying to fix that in the budget going forward to where, you know, we did have a small portion of that in the first year of the implementation. Now that we're moving into the SB 1383 issue, and we know we're going to have to, you know, pick up a little more of a workload, we're trying to true that up a little bit, so in fiscal year '22, that should be a little more of a, you know, I don't hate to call it a cost recovery, but it's getting closer to general fund neutral.
Yeah, so basically, we provide a home. And that's, okay. Okay, so we've got 8:25, 8:26 by my timing. I'd like to do a quick round robin of everyone to see if they thought of something afterwards that they'd like to be sure and mention. Does anyone have anything that they should have said and didn't get to say? Nope? As the phrase goes, say it now, forever hold your peace. Councilmember Lopez?
Yeah, I'll say, and I think you made me think of this, Mayor, with one of your comments about outsourcing or subcontracting, I'm not sure what the term, but in regards. And I'd be interested in examining that for our planning processes as well, if that's something that could make it more efficient responsive to the public, depending on, you know, how we see project scale back, maybe not this time, but we might see that the need is there.
So we're asking staff to take a look at all options, which is when they do operating budget and try and put this all together. We have to all remember that when we have staff, particularly since we have vacant positions, it costs the city money long-term to hire staff. So staff's going to be challenged to find alternatives, as is appropriate, to get the work done. So I think that's well said. I had a couple of final comments. I would say, be sure and have all the departments cross-check the commission's work lists and work plans. We said last time to have staff go through those, and they made some comments about being able to do it. I would just offer to make sure all the departments read it and concur with that. I do think the planning commission list items, as I said earlier, is going to be more done in the housing element update, not as independent work efforts. So I want to make sure that that's covered. The other item that we talked a little bit about tonight, several people use the word capacity. One of the advantages of doing the work plans in a little more concise manner is that what we, what I hope we will end up with in this draft operational plan is capacity such that when some, we all know things pop up. I mean, they just do. I mean, that's the nature of running a city. Something will come that we hadn't thought of. And we want to be able to have a conversation where staff has capacity to do work. We don't want to, I'm going to say, work plan them out to 100%, such that anything that comes up becomes a challenge between council, council members, and council and staff. The goal is to find a working network of things. So if something pops up, staff themselves can decide what the priority is, but they can ideally absorb some additional scopes of work, just because that's the way life is. So I'm hoping that when they come back with that. So we have half an hour left. And we said we wanted to come back with priorities. And anything else perhaps left over from last week about the CIP? I did confirm with the city manager that additional information requested on CIP items would be made available to us, certainly with the draft on the 11th, if not before. So that will help with some of that. But, and we know the next steps in terms of the budget are coming, getting the draft, and it is a draft on the 11th of May, and having the study session prior to the council meeting on the 18th of May. And we do want to be sure that the draft recognizes what we have been discussing over several meetings now that there are structural challenges to how the city budget is going to be resolved this year and going forward. So we're looking forward to seeing that addressed in the draft operational plan and budgets. We know that the work plans and the CIPs may change when we see it on the 11th versus the material and the discussions we've had today. I think Director Capurso just spoke to that, there may be some changes. So if we don't see exactly what we expect to see, that's okay, we can talk about it. That's why we've got the meeting on the 18th. So if all that makes sense, shall we go back and look at the meeting agenda, which has the priorities matrix in it? And we said last time that we knew there was a couple of tweaks that needed to be made to it. And I'm probably going to give the wrong reference, whoops, wrong reference page. But it's the matrix that was in the staff report. And...
Madam Mayor, would you like for me to walk you through what I had in my notes?
Yeah, can you pull that up, that matrix up?
Yes.
That would be wonderful.
Liz, FYI, we lost your video.
Yes. That's because I was looking through my documents.
Let me share screen here.
And I did go back and review the whole three-hour meeting, and you and I chatted about it.
So can you see my screen here?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so I'm sorry, it scans over two pages, but...
That's fine, works fine. Just scroll down a little bit, because you had a good note the other way. Perfect, perfect. Okay.
All right, you want me to kind of go through what I had in my notes?
Yes.
Okay, so under the land use and financial health, we were going to, there was a suggestion, strike the Bay Area 2050, add housing element under general plan. There was comments about objective standards.
and there and other future and other legislation. We do mention legislation in there, so I don't know that that needs to be changed, but we would add a housing element and we would add objective standards under there, if that if my notes are correct. And under there was a, the the next comment had to do with the redistricting. And we don't really have.
Under fiscal recovery, we added, under long-term financial and health business recovery, we added government efficiency, which had to do with redistricting. That's what my note says anyway.
Under fiscal stability, okay, I'll make that note. Okay.
Sorry, under under the fiscal stability priority, recommended priorities, under the bullet for comments, it would had a new bullet which said government efficiency.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I said add fiscal stability and then add government, you're right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, government efficiency, and that covered all the things that were discussed tonight.
All right.
Anybody else have any tweaks on those first two?
Yes. Just a little semantics, is it long-term financial plan or planning? And is it help businesses recovery or help businesses recover? Because it would be help business recovery or help businesses recover.
I like business recovery because it means that it's not just the existing businesses, but new businesses.
Yeah, so then the business wouldn't be plural, right? Wouldn't that be the correct?
I'm sorry, I closed up. You like help business recovery?
Yeah, it's so it's not just our existing businesses, but new businesses, so it help business recovery.
And then long-term financial planning.
Let him finish one before we change it all.
Oh, I had it covered up, I'm sorry. There we go.
So at leave the Y in, yeah.
The ES goes away in business.
I'll figure out for many, I'm sorry.
Done that.
Yeah, okay.
And long-term financial planning dramatically.
Sorry.
It's all right.
Under pressure.
I, yeah, I'm not I I'm fine with.
I'm not sure of all the right tools here, but but I'll highlight that.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's plan or planning.
Okay.
I had a lot of notes under open space, but I think we backed off of all of that.
I had a couple of comments on that one.
Okay.
It says maintain parks, complete park park projects and then playgrounds trails. Shouldn't it be maintain parks, playgrounds and trails? And the second bullet, complete parks or complete projects? Because we want to maintain playgrounds and trails.
I think the way it's written, it may, it has to do with the fact that they might want new new trails, it's more than just maintaining them.
Well, then the the second bullet would be then either complete parks or add parks. But just seems like we're not just maintaining parks, we're maintaining parks, playgrounds and trails.
I got you. We could separate those maybe, maybe it's maintain parks.
It's maintained and then have a separate one that says something about new.
All right, I think I've got that.
I'm only got, let me fix my screen here. Okay, so I can see all of you again. Councilmember Lopez, any tweaks?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with the changes that have been made, thank you for that. I I'd also, you know, now after the previous discussion, I'm I'm not sure if it would be here or under a work plan item. But just reexploring adding homelessness, maybe under land use, not as a commitment right now to take a particular course of action or or allocate a particular amount of resources, but just explore what is out there, especially in light of the the county presentation we heard last time.
Would that be under open space slash cultural or be under land use planning?
Yeah, I think it's more under a work plan, to be honest. I'm I'm open, I I know you and I have the same opinion on the significance of it. But let's, council members, whether they think it belongs as a line item and priorities.
And I'm I'm open to to either after that discussion.
So Councilmember Bybee or Vice Mayor Resnickoff, any thoughts about how to put homelessness in here or anything else?
I would add excuse me, Vice Mayor.
Hey, please, go ahead.
I would add the line item, I wouldn't list it as a priority under this.
So you put it as a a work plan item, is what you're saying?
A discussion of it or some you know, plan and and how to address it.
So I know it suggested that city, under the city manager's office, there was a work work plan item called homelessness, because I.
I know the the ad hoc committee was appointed, so possibly in administration.
Explain, sorry.
At the last council meeting, our committee was appointed, so maybe, you know, that would fall under administration.
Okay.
I I agree with that, I agree with Councilmember Bybee that I think it's premature to put it in priorities and we have to have some discussion of what that means and what would those actually be? And and then it may wind up in, I think it's a little premature now. But that doesn't.
I can't, I can't hear you, Paul, can you lean forward?
Yeah, as close as I can get. That that doesn't mean we lose track of it, I mean, I think we just means we focus elsewhere. Back here.
Yeah, and and I'm absolutely fine with that.
We need to know what it is, right? Like, what can we do, what's in our control, what resources do we want to put into it? And how do we prioritize though? What we got, and we have to have that discussion to get there.
Yeah, I'm supportive of that.
Okay, so that brings up another point that I was going to bring up, but I wasn't sure it was the right time to do it. Okay, so reviewing the priorities. This is an important discussion for us and I really do want to make sure everyone's had a chance to say what they want to say. We did suggest other things last time around and we ended up not doing it. But we want to tweak it a little more tonight, I think we should all have the opportunity to say so. Councilmember Lopez, did you raise your hand again? Okay. Okay. Uh, we have 17 minutes left. I'm going to confirm everyone understands what the next steps are. Everybody okay with the material coming to us as a draft on the 11th and the study session on the 18th? Okay. I will nudge the group with one one comment, which is, last time we met, let's see, can I ask this? I think I can ask this, yes, because it's going to be, it could would be a work item under the city manager's department. And it is related to homelessness. And maybe based on our conversation we just had, it will go fall fall to the ad hoc committee, which is Councilmember Lopez and Councilwoman Landry. I had really felt very strongly that we should set aside some of our ARP funds for the future and the unknowns. And this past week, there have been some very good articles about how other cities are using their ARP funding, one of which is to work with the county to buy properties such as a motel or something for affordable housing for the homeless or families. And I would just offer that that's something that seems to me a very appropriate use of the ARP funds. Another group is setting aside a chunk of their ARP funds to support businesses. So when you take a look at the operational budget, if you have any thoughts like that about how the ARP funds should be used, the decision by the group at the time was to put all the money in the general fund. So I just offer that as some more food for thought, which council members may want to talk about. I don't know if we can talk about it in detail right now. But I just offer that as something when you're looking at the draft operational budget. Anybody else got any outlandish ideas? Council.
I would support, I would support what you just said about.
I don't think we can discuss it.
Okay, well, all right.
Yeah, I'm I'm airing on the side of of soft safety, of course, the attorney has another opinion. Okay, no one has anything else, this is this is your best shot. Okay. All right, thank you staff for all of the information and the presentation and discussions. I think it was for the council members. And hopefully we all hope that we had a chance to have a good dialogue with each other. So thank you. And have a really nice.
Great, thank you.
All right, everyone, thank you very much.
Thanks, bye.